Welcome to the June 10th meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Dennison. We welcome all of you and thank you for being here with us this morning. It's customary that we begin our meetings with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. If you would care to join us, we'd ask that you would stand with us at this time. Javale Libby, Father, we thank you again for another opportunity to come together to solve the business of our home. We ask that you would let things be done decent in order as you will, and we thank you for all the blessings that you provide, and it's in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Please face the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. A little housekeeping before we get started this morning. The Planning Commission is a recommending body, so with the exception of site plans and Platts, which are, our decision on those cases are final, the public hearing cases, zoning cases will be sent to City Council for final approval on their meeting, which will be held...
June 16th.
There you go, June 16th. When we get to the item that you're here for, we will give you an opportunity to come to the lectern and speak either on for or against this particular item. We'd ask that you give us your name and address for the record, if you would please, and we've got a pretty sizable crowd this morning, Karen, so I think we will go ahead and impose a three-minute time limit on the speakers. So, that being said, we will move forward with our consent agenda. Any errors on missions? Anybody saw on that? Let the record reflect that, I believe on item B, which is the minutes from the May 27th? No, the May 13th, it's item A. I was not present for that meeting, so I will, for the record, abstain from item 4A. Okay?
I also was not present.
Karen, that may have to go to the next one, or are you...
I think he's still...
Okay.
Still both?
Yeah, okay, okay. All right. Okay, that being said, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Okay, have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, here we go. All right, we're going to move into public hearings. We are going to item, this is item 5A. Rick, it's yours.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. The first item I have for you this morning is a request for a conditional use permit for an aggregate sales yard on approximately 42 or 41 acre tract of land located within the Union Pacific Railroad. Property is kind of located north of Ray Drive, east of US 75, and south of FM 84. As I mentioned, this is for the operation of an aggregate sales yard. Just a little bit of history. So, the applicant, DeLeese Bros., we, city staff has been working with the applicant as well as Union Pacific Railroad for almost a year. We started the conversations to revisit the aggregate sales yard conditional use permit back in June of 2024, and as of January of 2025 is when the application was actually made. So, there's been substantial conversations between city staff and the applicant as well as the property owner. The property is zone lot industrial and per section 28 dot 49, the use regulation chart, in order to operate this business, a conditional use permit is required. The applicant intends to repurpose a site within the UPR or Union Pacific Railroad property that previously has served as a locomotive maintenance area to a site specifically for aggregate transloading. It's kind of hard to see, but the, this is the survey boundary for that property that's located within that UPR site. The operation of aggregate transloading does consist of aggregate arriving to the operation site by rail, being unloaded, stockpiled, and then reloaded onto trucks for sale and distribution. And the hours of operation will be consistent with those that are currently being utilized by UPR, which is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The applicant does state that loading, that the aggregate sales loading onto trucks typically occurs between 4:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. However, certain projects, particularly those related to TechDOT or those that require overnight operations, may require extended hours that go into the overnight hours. Currently, West Morton Street and Ray Drive serve as the entry and exit point for all truck traffic in and out of Union Pacific Railroad property. DeLeese has submitted civil engineering plans to city staff, which are currently under review to construct a connection to Katy Memorial Expressway. You can kind of see that connection from their site particularly, but the site to the, I guess on the left side of this screen, that will be the connection to Katy Memorial Expressway, which is the service road to US 75. This connection, this access road, is going to be the sole access into the UPR site. So, not only for this applicant, but any existing tenants and any future tenants will utilize this access. As I mentioned, right now, West Morton Street, or Old Morton as we know it, and Ray Drive bear all of that truck traffic going in and out of the Ray Yards, that will no longer be once this is constructed. And then in addition to creating this access road, barriers will be placed at the current entry, which is kind of at the corner of Ray Drive and West Morton, on the west side of the property, as well as a gated entry located on the east side of Ray Drive that will be replaced with a new locked gate to serve as an access for emergency services only. It's kind of hard to see that access on here. I don't really know exactly where to point it out with, because you won't be able to see with my finger, but it is an access point into the yards that doesn't have any kind of access or security at the moment, and the applicant is proposing to put that gate there to deter anybody from entering in that area. And on the west side where those barriers will be placed, I should clarify that this will be for truck traffic. So, any customers coming in to pick up loads or any 18-wheeler truck traffic, those, that's the traffic that will be utilizing that connection point onto US 75. You will still have Union Pacific Railroad employees utilizing their office that is right there at that corner. So, your typical vehicles that you, we would drive, your trucks, FM, your F-150s, 250s, things like that. In addition to this access, DeLeese will comply with all local and state required regulations, including but not limited to obtaining any applicable TCEQ permits. Dust is going to predominantly be mitigated by utilizing a dedicated water spray system, and then water trucks will be utilized for controlling dust on the stockpiles. It should be noted that the aggregate is saturated before leaving the shipping facility, which does reduce any potential dust being generated during the railcar unloading. However, continuous monitoring of the dust will be conducted and mitigating, mitigation techniques may be changed in order to meet that optimal dust suppression. To help reduce noise impacts to that neighboring property to the south or any other neighboring properties, the applicant will utilize white noise backup alarms. This alarm system is more localized and will allow them to still be compliant with safety measures, but prevent any kind of immediate vicinity, or, I'm sorry, extended vicinity impact to that property to the south. DeLeese and Union Pacific Railroad will retain that existing vegetation located along the north side of Ray Drive, which provides a substantial visual buffer, as well as helps mitigate sounds or any noise from that rail yard and their operations. Excuse me, I'm sorry. As well as, they will design their lighting and shield, they will design their lighting to minimize any impacts on that property to the south as well. I will say that I have walked this site, several staff members have walked this site, and there is a substantial topography change between that natural landscape buffer and where the site will be located as well. So, not only will that vegetation provide that visual buffer, the topography will also help. As I mentioned, the applicant is currently under civil engineering plan review for that access point. I believe that that is close to getting approved, so they'll be able to start construction after they go through the pre-construction process with our engineering team. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a mixed-commercial manner. This use is appropriate and meets the definition found within the comprehensive plan for mixed-commercial. It does have a revitalization area overlay. The comprehensive plan defines this revitalization area overlay to pertain more to neighborhoods and requiring mixed-use development sidewalks and things of that nature. I can't really provide an explanation why that designation was placed over the rail yard, because the rail yard has been here for several years, and at the time that the comprehensive plan that was approved back in 2018, there's no plans of it going away. So, while it doesn't meet the definition of a revitalization area overlay per the comprehensive plan, they, the applicant, as well as the property owner, are taking steps to improve that area by creating that connection point, taking all of that truck traffic off of Old Morton and Ray Drive, which does allow for the possibility of future improvements without the fear of those being redamaged. Our staff is recommending approval of the request with several conditions. I'm going to read those. I know you'll have to read them with your motion if you choose to move forward with approving this. First condition is acquisition and compliance with all required state and local permits, the continuous abatement of dust and noise related to the aggregate yard operations, maintenance of the existing tree line and vegetation located on the north side of Ray Drive, civil engineering plan approval and construction of the access road located under Highway 75 connecting to Katy Memorial Expressway for all customer and operational traffic within the Union Pacific Rail Yard. Barriers being placed along Ray Drive to prevent customer and operational traffic from entering or exiting Union Pacific Rail Yard and replacing the gate located on the east side of Ray Drive, requiring access to be locked and available for emergency services only. And lastly, civil engineering plan approval and construction of utility infrastructure for operations. This is pertaining to water. As I mentioned, staff recommends approval of the request with those conditions. I'm present for any questions that you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
I got one. The...
Yes, sir.
The property to the north of Ray Drive that we were discussing, that looks pretty heavily true, so is that going to provide additional screening?
Are you talking, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, are you talking about the...
Yeah, if you look where Ray Drive is coming there, it looks like to me that there's a pretty heavily tree line that goes all the way down the...
Yes, sir, that's the tree, tree line that staff had mentioned. That will be retained and maintained.
Yeah, so that's going to provide noise, dust prevention, lighting, it's going to create a barrier basically between the two. And there's also a substantial topography draw.
There is a substantial topography difference, yeah.
Okay. I have one more question for yous all. So, you're, I understand you're closing off the entry. You can see the one on the map here further down Ray Drive and then the existing one off of Old Morton. But are you going to put signage out probably off of Morton or something? Because if you've still got truck traffic going back there and finding out they can't get in, it may not totally solve the issue. Is there going to be some way of signage or something to tell people that there is a new entrance and how to get to the cars?
That's a very good question. I think that that's a good question for the applicant or for the property owners to answer. They may have ideas on how to provide that. They may have to work with TechDOT, but I imagine that Union Pacific will make their tenants aware, the existing tenants that are there, to take the connection once it's built.
And are there weight restrictions already in place on Ray Drive or Old Morton?
No.
No axle or weight restrictions?
One more time?
No axle or weight restrictions?
No, sir, no.
Any other questions of staff?
Yes, on number four, on the conditional use permit criteria about traffic, you know, the Highway 75 and 120 intersection areas, one of the busiest intersections in our community. I assume the goal is going to be to get the trucks on 75, and there's really no access to get past 120 and past 120, and then if you're going south, or you, if you're going north, you'd have to come through and do the circle and go back north. But that is a very busy intersection, and four doesn't really seem to address that to me.
So, with that civil plan review, or the civil plans that they submitted for that access point, they did provide a traffic impact analysis, and staff has been working with TechDOT for that access point, and the TIA came back with the findings that TechDOT was comfortable with, as well as staff. They will, it was mentioned also as, within the hours of operation, they typically load early or load late, and so not necessarily during those peak hours where that intersection is super busy, like around 8 o'clock or 5:00 PM.
Okay, do we have any idea of the amount of traffic, truck traffic this is going to generate or set something past the applicant?
I believe, I believe that they can clarify me on this. I believe that their project narrative stated that it would be about 100 trucks a day, but I would ask that the applicant either clarify or correct me on that, but I think that that is mentioned within the project narrative that's a part of the agenda.
In the future TechDOT plan, I think they've already, I think they proposed a corridor plan all the way up to the Oklahoma line, correct?
So, that is correct. As you know, TechDOT, some of the planning is 20 years down the road, right? And I sit on the MPO and the Technical Advisory Committee for TechDOT, and that's the only way that I'm comfortable sharing that information with you. The planning and the funding that we need right now is not here. So, we know that things are going to have to change, and I can't speak for TechDOT or the district engineer on how they're going to reallocate funding, but yes, they, they have a plan to continue that work from where it is in Sherman up all the way to the Oklahoma line. When that'll be led and when it'll start and when it'll finish is, you know, that's a guess for all of us.
Because this is also the similar place where the tollway may be coming in.
Uh, that's a little further north.
Little bit further north.
Yes. So, all of that, we meet with them regularly. They're aware of all of this, but as Diane alluded to, they have to give their approval for certain things that we work with on the permitting side, and so I would anticipate some other changes coming down the line as we see that traffic increase. To Mr. Sylvester's point, we've had other developments along FM 120 with the same questions, the QT and the Chick-fil-A and things like that. So, all of those things come into play when staff makes that recommendation, as well as the feedback from TechDOT.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. I've got several letters here. I believe I've got four letters here in opposition, and I have one letter here that's in support of the request, so record will make that note. Is the applicant here this morning?
Yes, he is.
Would you like to come forward?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to open the public hearing for item 5B.
Leland Meiser, 8300 North Oklahoma Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73004. Brought my notes just to be accurate and don't want to leave anything out as I'm addressing. I'm president of DeLeese Brothers Company. Last Friday, I celebrated 36 years of employment with DeLeese, so I've been with them a long time and know how we operate, how we do things, and worked my way up from the bottom of the company all the way to the top. I want to share a little bit about DeLeese history. The company began in 1902 as DeLeese Shepherd in Chicago. As the railroad was being constructed, DeLeese was part of that and provided construction materials to the railroad to, you know, build it, construct it. As the railroad moved south into the Midwest, the company followed that, that pattern and then set up shop in Oklahoma. And so, when we set up shop in Oklahoma, we were actually there prior to statehood. So, we actually had an office in Oklahoma City longer than Oklahoma than state. And so, currently, we operate 10 stone courses, four sand plants, over 40 ready mix concrete plants, and four tran, aggregate transload facilities. Three of those transload facilities are in Oklahoma, and one of those transload facilities is in Fort Worth, Texas, that are all operational discount. We understand that the City of Dennison has a very rich history of being a railroad town, and so we're, we're excited about the possibility of being part of this community. I'm proud of our experienced team and knowledgeable team for putting together a plan and working on this project for over a year. We've worked very closely with UP, Union Pacific Railroad, to make sure that we have functional site design. We've also worked very closely with the City of Dennison to ensure highlighting transparency, growth, and site improvements, and all this dedication was to create a win-win-win scenario, win for City of Dennison, win for DeLeese, win for Union Pacific Railroad. And so, we're honored to be here today and would love to be a member of this community. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to our project manager, Andy, for additional details.
Andy, could you give us your name and address for the record too, please?
Good morning. My name is Andy Aronoff, and I'm also in San Andreas, 8300 North Oklahoma Avenue, Oklahoma City. I want to kind of give a little bit of information about the site and my background, my background. I'm a licensed engineer in many states, including the state of Texas. My background's mostly in engineering project management. As Diane said, we've been working on this project for almost a year now. We started this project on the access road. We knew that that access road was a critical portion of this project, and we really wanted to start that project with that access road. What's really important to note on this access road is truck traffic currently goes through the neighborhood via Ray Drive, and any existing truck traffic, as well as any new truck traffic from us, would then be in this new access road, eliminating all truck traffic through the neighborhood. The primary product that will be brought in is a concrete stone, which I have a little jar here to show. It's kind of like a three-quarter inch concrete stone. It's used as a basic building block for all construction. So, this goes into ready mixed concrete, asphalt. It's really used for basic building block for all construction, any type of roads, bridges, buildings, use this type of product. What this site is being proposed to use is a transload facility, and what that means is the concrete stone will be brought in via rail, stockpiled, and then it'll be loaded on the trucks and brought to customer sites. Not any different than most of your other activities on site, just a different type of product, which would be a concrete aggregate stone. Couple of things I want to note is that buffer zone, we're calling it a buffer zone, which is that vegetation in between Ray Drive and the property boundary. We, we designed our property boundary to be outside of that buffer zone. We really leave that buffer zone in there. It's heavily vegetated with trees that reach almost 50 feet tall, heavily, heavily vegetated. Yeah, a couple of things I want to note in regards to noise. All of our backup alarms, we've incorporated with what's referred to as a quiet backup alarm or a white noise backup alarm. And I have a little presentation. I'm going to show you what that sounds like compared to a, like a factory backup alarm sounds like. And so, this is what a factory backup alarm sounds like. It's very loud, it's very radiating in its tone, it raises very far, long distance, compared to a, a white noise backup alarm. Sounds a little more like STAG, and it's really designed to be a little more localized, only really notify those that are within medium vicinity that machinery is backing up. And the white noise backup alarm is mainly designed to not radiate as far as a typical backup alarm. In regards to dust, dust in its nature is very dynamic, and it's something that has to be constantly monitored and adjusted for. Dust mitigation will predominantly be used via water, via, could be a haul truck, different spray bottles, and it's something that constantly has to be adjusted throughout the day. We have experienced many, many different types of applications with dust controls. What's important to note is this application is only a transload aggregate facility, where rock will just be brought in already processed. There is no ready mixed, no crushing, no screening. All this application is, is a aggregate transload facility, rock be brought in by rail, stockpiled, and brought to a customer site. I think through this application and with DeLeese, I think we're really excited to be a part of this growing community. We're really excited to be a partner with City of Dennison. We believe this access road is a big investment for us, and I think it's a big investment for the community. It will make Ray Drive a much, much more peaceful place to lock your dogs, and we are really excited to be a partner with the City of Dennison.
Any questions of the speakers?
I would just reiterate the one I'd asked earlier about the question around the signage. Has that been considered or thought about?
That is something we would work with Union Pacific Railroad landlords, and it would be something that would be brought in with, notify all the existing tenants, as well as we would notify the TechDOT. We may have a, a TechDOT signage along, somewhere along there to notify, kind of giving wayward signage to, like in all their directions.
Could you elaborate upon the, the traffic? Will a lot of that be going south or north or both? I think something was mentioned, 100 trucks per day, that sounds like a lot of traffic.
Sure. Most of the traffic will be going south and west, and what I want to note on 100 trucks a day is this type of product is currently coming in through Dennison community via truck. You know what difference is from us, it'll be brought in by rail and distributed by truck. This, our, our product, the concrete stone, is a basic building block for all construction, and with a growing community of Dennison, a lot of this stone is already brought in by trucks, so the overall truck mileage will be reduced with this project. But as Diane had mentioned at the beginning, most of the truck traffic is outside peak hours, so they really try to avoid any type of rush hours.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Stand by, we may have some others. All right, anyone else here that would like to speak on this request, either for or against? Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Discussion among the commission? None? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
So, I move to go ahead and approve this request with the following conditions, that the acquisition and compliance with all required state and local permits are adhered to, continuous abatement of dust and noise related to the aggregate yard operations in entirety, maintenance of the existing tree line and vegetation located along the north side of Ray Drive, civil engineering plan is approved and construction access to the road located under Highway 75, reconnecting to Katy Memorial Expressway for all customer and operational traffic within the Union Pacific Rail. Also, that barriers are placed along Ray Drive to present customer and operational traffic from entering and the existing rail yard and replacing the gate located at the east side of Ray Drive, requiring access to be locked and available for emergency services only. The civil engineering plan and approval of construction utility infrastructure for operations is also a condition.
Have a lengthy motion. Do I have a lengthy second?
I say.
Okay. It's a short one, but we'll take it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Post? All right.
Against.
Okay. So, we have three in favor, one opposed. Okay, we're going to move on now and open the public hearing for item 5B.
Thanks, sir. Item 5B is a request to rezone approximately... I'm just going to give the applicant a little bit of time. Item 5B is a request to rezone approximately 7.8 acre tract of land, commonly known as 2430 West Coffin Street, from the single-family 7.5 residential district to the single-family SF5 residential district to allow for residential uses. This case was, or this item was tabled by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting held on May 27th. So, this is a continuation of that public hearing. This is an aerial view. This is an aerial view of the subject property, twenty-four thirty West Coffin Street. You can see that to the, on the left of your screen, and then the zoning aerial, um, predominantly surrounded by that single-family seven point five zoning. This is it.
Question before we proceed?
Okay.
Do we need to go ahead and do a motion, remove this from the table, before we proceed any farther?
No sir.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. This is the zoning, uh, conceptual site plan, or I should just say conceptual site plan, uh, for the subdivision, if, uh, approved. So the applicant, as I mentioned, is requesting to rezone from the seven point five to the SF five, uh, district to allow for the development of approximately forty-two single-family homes. Uh, per the applicant's project narrative, the development will be constructed in a thoughtful manner, and the applicant intends to utilize, um, architectural design standards, landscaping, and streetscaping that meets or exceeds the minimum, uh, requirements listed within section twenty-eight dot fifty-one dot seven, which is the landscape ordinance. And will also create a homeowners association to maintain any detention in common areas. This, uh, conceptual plan does show a couple of those common areas. Uh, the property consists of two parcels dissected by dedicated city right-of-way for the continuation of South Bluebonnet Avenue. Uh, the applicant must design and construct the street, um, to city standards, as well as any additional in, um, internal public streets and the connection to the existing streets such as Arapahoe Drive. Any, uh, public streets that are constructed must meet, just to reiterate, must meet the, uh, minimum city standards found within the Public Works Design Manual and Construction Standards, as well as those that are found within chapter twenty-two of the subdivision ordinance. Right now, as I mentioned, that Bluebonnet Avenue does dissect the property. They are proposing to reconfigure it slightly, however, that will still be a public, uh, a dedicated public right-of-way. Through the preliminary plat and civil engineering plan supplemental review, the applicant must submit a trafficked impact estimate or analysis to aid in determining if additional traffic mitigation will be required, required. Additionally, a tree survey must be submitted with the preliminary plat application and a tree preservation plan, and any necessary mitigation requirements are required at the time of final plat application. Uh, the proposed development is subject to the assessment and collection of impact fees and park dedication fees, and both fees are assessed at the time of plating, impact fees are collected at building permit, park dedication fees are collected at the time of final plat. Um, it should be noted that, um, while this is just the, uh, zoning, uh, request at the moment, through civil engineering plan and plating is when, um, staff will be able to determine what additional mitigation is required. Uh, because with the application, a trafficked estimate has not been provided, and it is possible that additional, uh, improvements may need to be made and, made if, uh, in the surrounding, um, on the surrounding infrastructure, if this case is to move forward, um, as well as any detention areas may be required. But like I said, we won't, we won't know that fully until we have those civil engineering plans. Just to reiterate, this is a, a rezone request from the single-family seven point five district to the SF five district. The proposed forty-two single-family home, uh, concept plan, all of those proposed lots do meet the minimum standards found within the SF five district. The civil engineering plans will really determine if all forty-two lots can be developed. Uh, there may be, um, there may be less lots that are developed, depending on if detention is needing or additional improvements. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner, and so this rezone request does comply with the future land use plan. And because of that, staff does recommend approval of the request. And I'm present for any questions that you may have, um, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions of staff?
Yes, if you don't mind, uh, for my benefit and benefit of the people here.
Yes sir.
Could you explain the difference between a single-family seven point five and a single-family five?
Yes sir. Uh, so, single-family seven point five, um, requires a minimum, uh, lot area of seventy-five hundred square feet with a minimum frontage of sixty feet and a minimum, minimum depth of a hundred. So, um, in order to get to that seventy-five, one of those has to be larger, right? Sixty, either the frontage or the depth. Um, in addition to the lot size requirements, there are, uh, there is a difference between the square footage. So seven point five requires a minimum home to be built at twelve hundred square feet, um, and requires a two-car garage, as well as two additional parking spaces within the drive. Uh, single-family's, uh, five allows for a, uh, lot size of five thousand square feet with the minimum, uh, width of the lot to be fifty, minimum depth of a hundred. And the parking, uh, requirement is a one-car covered parking by way of either a single-car carport or a single-car garage with one additional space in the driveway. Um, those are, uh, oh, and the minimum square foot for the home is nine fifty. Those are the significant differences between each of those residential districts.
Thank you.
Yes sir, thank you.
But it is already designated seven point five?
Yes sir.
Okay, so homes can be built there?
Yes sir.
Diane, did you repeat? Minimum size under SF five?
For the structure or for the lot? Okay, so seven point five requires a minimum square footage of twelve hundred square feet. Uh, SF five requires a minimum of nine fifty square feet, nine hundred and fifty square feet.
And, uh, let me go ahead and insert something there for you Larry. At the price these lots are going to cost, uh, you won't be building nine hundred fifty-four foot houses on these lots. And you won't be building any twelve hundred square foot houses on these lots either, because the, the development cost, the lot cost is going to prohibit a house that small from being constructed. So, that won't be, I don't think that's going to be an issue, regardless of how big the lot is, so.
And then, just to ask a question I talked about earlier, but there's no, there's no real guidance or guideline around parking in general in the, in the current zoning for SF five, correct?
Outside of...
Of one in one.
Yes sir.
One in a, under a structure and one in the driveway.
Yes sir. They, the applicant or anybody who wishes to construct within that zoning district can exceed, as long as they don't, um, meet the percentage coverage, but, um, they could potentially build two-car garages with the minimum.
What is the percentage on the SF five?
I think it's fifty. I can look real quick.
And that's impervious surfaces or structure?
I think it includes the structures.
Okay, all right. And then, so assuming also in this development, this is the typical street size you have in Dennison, which if you're parking on both sides of the street, there's only room for one lane of traffic?
Yes, if they meet the minimum local street, um, right-of-way dedication, it would be what you typically see, yes sir.
So you're going to have basically one lane of zigzagging traffic in and out of this?
Yes, if they're parking on the street, yes sir.
Streets thirty-one foot back and curb, back and curb now?
Yes sir. And if I could clarify something, there is a, uh, limit on impervious surface in the front yard. So, you can't concrete the entire front yard, I think it's fifty percent, but I, I, I could confirm that in just a second.
Okay, any other questions? Is the applicant here? Come forward sir. Name and address for the record, please. Okay, um... Anything you want to add to what staff has already said, or are you just open for questions? How do you want to approach this?
Yeah, I mean, um, as, um, Diane mentioned, the minimum nine hundred and thirty-five square feet, uh, what would it be? But we are planning to build at least sixteen hundred square feet. Additionally, we are also trying for two-car garages. Uh, against the traffic thing, that we are also ready to do any traffic analysis needed. Um, I think the seventy, from seventy-five hundred to five thousand square feet, probably adding maybe ten to fifteen houses, which we are talking about thirty more acres added to the neighborhood, so I'm assuming you won't impact anything. However, we are ready to do any kind of impact.
Okay, let's go back to, let's go back to, uh, in the notes, uh, you're going to have a homeowners association, is that correct? And so I'm sure there will be deed restrictions, covenants, that will accompany, um, the homeowners association. In, in those covenants, uh, obviously if you zone this SF five, then we have to go by what that ordinance is. But in the covenants, are you going to specify that the minimum square footage will be sixteen hundred square feet?
Correct, that's right, that's right.
And you will specify that the requirement will be two-car garage? Um, which would give us two more parking places there. Then, on your design standards, are you going to be specific as to certain architectural elements that, that will be required per elevation? Uh, will you be that specific in your design standards?
Yeah, as I've said, we didn't finalize, but the plan, what we are trying to do is pretty much eighty percent edge brick, and maybe twenty percent siding, that's our plan. However, we moved into a lot of the design requirement, what City of...
So, for example, minimum roof pitches, uh, any kind of architectural requirements, whether it be coach lamps, shutters, whatever decorative items, are you going to be specific in your, in your design standards that would cover, cover that?
Yes sir.
You will be?
Yes sir.
Okay.
And we want to be, you know, uh, not, uh, discussing anything to the name current neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
And we will try to match what of the current houses there. Uh, the aspect again, we would like to maybe put it even better, what the current neighborhood is.
Okay, will your, will your homeowners association include an architectural review committee?
Yes sir.
That will approve each plan before it's constructed?
Yes sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions of the speaker?
Yes, do you foresee this as being, uh, several different builders or, or attract builder? I know a lot of times when they come in, the houses pretty much look the same. Uh, are you going to have different builders, uh, have access to this development? What's your plan regarding that?
So I'm, I'm not just going to be a, uh, owner, sir, I'm actually a developer and builder. Uh, we build homes in the City of Colony, uh, in Dallas, and in the City of Lucas. So I'm going to be the builder as well, so I'm not going to let somebody else do that, so I'll be that whole responsibility.
So you don't propose to sell, sell sites, you're going to be the developer of the homes?
Yes sir.
Okay.
Are these, these are not going to be rental property, these are going to be owner-occupied?
Owner-occupied, yes.
Any other questions of the speaker? Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
I have, uh, two speaker cards, uh, is it Robert, uh, Mears? Yes sir.
Good morning, Robert Mears, twenty-four oh one Caprice Avenue, Dennison, Texas, seven five zero two zero. Uh, as we come back from two weeks ago, our opposition to this is still firm. Two, two really issues that we look at, that we're concerned about is the gas, plant the gas relay station is right there on that property. And the other is traffic, Coffin Street, uh, even though at times of the day, there's not a lot, but when it is, it's, there's a lot of traffic. Cars cannot hardly meet each other without pulling almost off the pavement when you, when you meet a car, and if you have to go down the street when a trash truck is there, you have to wait pretty much till they get to the other end of the street to get around them. Uh, it's just not wide enough to, uh, for the traffic that we have now. Ever since Park Avenue was finished and all those houses there, the traffic is, um, I'm going to say it's double, maybe even triple for what we used to have. Uh, we've been in that house since nineteen ninety-two, and it's, the traffic has just gotten worse and worse and worse. And with the construction on seventy-five, people are having to find different ways to get around, to get home now. And it's, it's, it's just a problem. There's only one street that meets, that comes into Coffin, that has a stop sign there, and that's on Bluebonnet. Our street, uh, on Caprice, and the one down, uh, s, uh, east of it, is the one that has stop signs. Uh, I, I sit down on the front porch and watch cars just go right, get to that intersection and not even stop. And here comes the car over the hill. Uh, we are opposed to this, uh, uh, I understand that, uh, it probably doesn't do us any good to do, there's not a lot of us that are opposed to it, or a lot, a lot of us have seen any cars or not, uh, but we are opposed to it, and, uh, we, uh, just don't think it's the right time to do it, the right thing to do on that piece of property right now.
Any questions of our speaker?
Mr. Mears, can you give me those intersections of where the stop?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask as well.
I was wondering about the stop sign intersections, but she has them written down. Thank you sir.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, David Schindler?
David Schindler, twenty-six oh five Rappo Circle, Dennison, Texas, seven five oh two oh. Uh, it's, my main purpose for being here today is that, uh, the problem issue did not get resolved two weeks ago, and it's important for me to show up again and show my, uh, lack of support for this project and request that the council, uh, deny their request to shrink lots, shrink the house sizes, increase traffic, and all the other things that go along with it. I, uh, respectfully ask for you to keep us on as it is.
Any questions of speaker?
Yeah, if I could ask sir, what, what's your primary, what's the biggest concern that you have, is it traffic or...?
Well, it, it is traffic on Coffin Street, on the Rappo Drive. It's, uh, and I know, uh, Mr. Sheriff disagrees, but it would devalue our home properties with, uh, uh, houses that are half the size, uh, flooded up to our properties. There's also, uh, I, I know the city is going to do the, the tree studies because there's magnificent trees on these things, so I'm not concerned about that. There is some flooding concerns of mine, because my property has the, the, uh, drainage duct for our area, and that does get a lot of rainfall and, uh, forms a creek from my property all the way to the spur five oh three. So, uh, and by the way, it would increase additional flooding on five oh three where the access road is, because I'm sure if I went there today, I would see where the earth was washed over the, the highway from the last run. So, ask the city to consider the flooding also.
Okay.
There'll be quite a lot, there'll be less, less, uh, ground to absorb twice as many houses, so. And we all know the problems on Easy Street that the city has really addressed to funnel across Coffin Street, but, you know, there's a lot of flooding there to consider also. And, uh, don't let me forget the, uh, the gas, uh, pumping station there. Every winter, when, uh, supply for gas increases, they seem to overcharge it. This results in the pop-off valve going off, releasing gas into the air, of which, uh, the fire department's been out there several times for that call. And on what occasion that I remember, uh, they said, well, it's, it's dispersing, well, it's dispersing fumes all the way to my house, which is three blocks away. So I, and I don't hear the pop-off valve, I can smell the strong odor of, of propane or whatever gas they're having through. This also may, may be a concern for people who want to live in that area. They may not want to live next to that, uh, pump station or whatever it is there on Coffin Street. I know, uh, I believe it was, uh, one house has been taken for about three years now. Uh, another one can't stay rented, and it's because of that gas station, pump station.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else here to speak on this request, either for or against? No one? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Discussion?
I would like to know, is staff aware of any future plans for Coffin? I know it's not curb and gutter and all of those things.
I'm, I'm not aware of it, being a part of the ten-year CIP, um, that I can ask and have... I'm, I'm not aware of it, being a part of the ten-year CIP, um, but I can ask and have that clarified. I, also, if I could, it is, um, fifty percent of buildings and accessory buildings for that lot coverage. And then it is fifty percent, uh, for the front yard for the, um, area that's covered by impervious surface. Yes, sir. I, I will, I'm sorry, if I could follow up, through the civil engineering plan review, it is possible that improvements, um, will be required of the applicant, um, onto Coffin in order to mitigate any traffic concerns. Um, I don't, anytime we have pre-development meetings, those are things that are mentioned to what the, um, any potential applicants or any potential developers. And they account for, obviously, the development of their own property. But because our infrastructure is aging or has aged quite a bit, there is a requirement for them to, um, improve elsewhere in order to allow for the existing infrastructure to accommodate those developments. And so, it is likely that there would be requirements to improve Coffin, what those are, I don't know. If that's a hundred percent, I also don't know, but that would be determined through that civil engineering plan review. And it is possible that the access points will not be enough, um, for, to mitigate that traffic 'cause even though it's only going to add a couple of cars, if the existing infrastructure is overburdened, there may be additional mitigation that's required, um, for that developer. And that's this developer, any developer.
Okay, so what we're looking at today, what's under consideration is just the zoning change?
It is.
This is not approval of the final plat or anything like that?
Correct, so the applicant, if the, um, application is to move forward, as I mentioned, um, earlier, they, they will have to submit a preliminary plat, civil engineering plans and a final plat. And preliminary plat is acted upon by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Civil engineering plans and final plat are reviewed and approved by staff. However, civil engineering plans are really what drives, uh, the success of a development. Um, I will also note that while this is just the zoning, if it is rezoned, then the minimum standards that are found within the zoning ordinance is all that staff can enforce. So, the codes and covenants that were mentioned earlier, Mr. Chair, the city does not enforce those. And while I appreciate that those would be, those design standards would be placed, um, within those codes and covenants, I just wanted to clarify that that is not something that the city would enforce or can enforce.
But drainage and traffic would be more thoroughly addressed?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes.
And they would technically have to deal with their own drainage on property?
They would have to account for their onsite drainage, offsite drainage, and if they are increasing any flows to any other drainage facilities.
That would have to be enhanced to accommodate.
Yes, sir, and I am not a hydrologist or an engineer, so I don't wanna, I know just enough to be dangerous. But all of that is addressed through the civil engineering plan review and lots of lot drainage is not allowed. And if you are increasing flows into an existing drainage facility or into a FEMA flood plain, then there is mitigation that has to be considered.
And then, am I assuming that that lot we're going around is the, the gas?
That's the gas, yeah.
That we're referring to?
Yes, sir, so they are proposing on this, uh, conceptual plan to create common areas adjacent to that gas hub. Um, there are also, um, distance requirements from that gas facility, I don't know what those are, it's, uh, managed by the fire department.
That, well, that's what I was gonna ask, what are the safety standards, 'cause I see a playground there.
That is, um, potentially what they're going to do there. Um, if there are concerns with that playground being too close to that gas hub, the fire department will not sign off on the plat.
And is there a, I guess, how does that work if you build something that has a perimeter from it? Is, is, isn't there supposed to be an easement for that or?
There would be an easement.
So, there is an easement in place for that?
Not that I'm aware of at the moment, none of this area is platted. Um, if there are easements, they are established via separate instrument.
And we don't, we're not sure what the easement is from that gas?
No, sir. That would be per the fire code, and I'm assuming that's the national fire code, not just what state of Texas or what local COG amendments would require. Um, Atmos, which I'm assuming this is an Atmos gas hub, they will also have their own standards, um, just to pre- prevent any adverse effects for them, um, as well as anybody that lives there.
We don't have any dimensions on this, this, uh, concept plan, but do you have any idea what average lot size is for this development? 'Cause we have some lots that are, seem to be larger than the SF five.
That's a good question, um, I would, I would ask the applicant to answer that, um, and just be mindful, this is a, a conceptual plan that it could easily change, but if they have an average lot size, I would ask them to answer that. I would just be, from a staff perspective, I would be looking at the minimum of five thousand square feet, minimum fifty on the front and a hundred down the depth.
Anything else, guys? Alright, I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the subject property being rezoned to SF five, single-family residential district.
My second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll oppose on that one.
Okay, so we have three in favor, one opposed. So, understand that this will be moved on to city council for final approval, so, uh, that will be on that June?
June sixteenth at six P M. Here.
Okay. Alright. Staff updates?
The only update I have for you, um, is the results from the June second city council meeting. Um, the conditional use permit for the office warehouse that was located on Wood Lawn, um, did I say office warehouse, I'm sorry, storage facility, I apologize. That was approved, um, with no conditions. The second item, the SF ten, single-family ten zoning, that's located on Randell Lake Road, they tabled that item to their meeting on June sixteenth because the applicant was not present. Um, there was quite a few questions concerning that property, so they went ahead and tabled it.
Okay.
That's all I have for you.
You know, um, it kinda irritates me when the applicant doesn't show for a case.
It is required by the ordinance that they appear.
And I know on other commissions that I have sat on, um, we were reluctant to table, but more inclined to deny if they weren't, you know. So, uh, I think we need to stress maybe, if you don't show up, there's a possibility that your request could get denied.
Yes, sir, staff can definitely do that. It, it, it does state within the ordinance that if they are not in attendance, that it is grounds for denial.
Yep.
Um, I think.
I hate to be that kind of person, but.
You almost need to be with as much activity that might be coming through, right?
Well, we will, staff will do a much better job of making sure that they understand when they're supposed to be here and.
It's also, uh, I think Felicia and Diane do a good job of making sure that people know it's on the agenda, so there's an accountability factor, not you guys.
There is, very much so, it's not staff's fault.
It's on them.
Yeah.
If they want it that announced, they should be present.
That's, that's exactly what I mean, if you want this to pass, you should be here to represent it.
I think you guys do a good job of, yeah.
There's a certain element of cockiness there that kind of sticks in my craw, I think, but I don't know if that's being tamed, but that's how I feel about it, but.
That's the only updates we have.
Okay, uh, can we not lose our sight on our design standard, uh?
We are not.
It's even more evident.
We are not losing sight of that, I am going to, um, we just discussed this yesterday as we're going through budget right now. And so, uh, I'm going to reach out to Phyllis Gerald to see, um, I have some money to spend down for this budget year to see if she might be interested, um, in taking that on.
Okay.
To get it moving a little faster.
I, uh, I think that's a great recommendation there.
Okay.
And, and I, one more comment, I guess, 'cause it's part of the reason I had a little issue with that last case is when you see things that, in my opinion, involve life and safety that aren't plotted, it, I, I understand that was not to agree the final plot of that thing, but it was to agree the zoning. But I think we've got to understand that before we'd even consider zoning something. 'Cause if we turn around and there's a seventy-five foot setback from that or a hundred foot setback from that, everything we just did changes a lot, right?
Well, and I wrote down, um, parking continues to be an issue for all of you, um, and I believe staff as well. Um, and so, maybe that needs to be addressed in a different manner within our ordinances.
Well, 'cause it's easy to say that they will, but to your point, I, it's not enforceable, right?
Yeah, we can't enforce it.
Sherman requires a parking space for each bedroom.
Yeah, and at sixteen hundred square foot, those are probably three slash four bedroom houses in today's world, right?
I think what Mary is ma- possibly alluding to is, 'cause I, I think I kinda discussed this with you a little earlier, was that we wanna, we don't wanna overpark. And the more footprint that we can, um, provide or a lower, possibly, when we venture into affordable housing, parking is something that is very costly. But if we are able to mitigate parking by way of cons- infrastructure construction, whether that be bump outs within the street um, or dedicated parking within the street that you typically see in the metroplex, I think that's where you were going. That would be a good opportunity for these neighborhoods, um, so that we're, our development standards, yes, are a lower parking number, but at that point, there is parking available in other means.
But could it also be stipulate something more into the, the design standards of the street right away, dictating if you're?
Yes.
'Cause if fairness, some of these lots, the point Charlie made, are probably well over five K.
Mm-hmm.
So, could you push those streets wider so it, it's literally four lanes, right?
So, that's what I'm.
You've got two lanes of traffic and two parking lanes.
Correct, that is outside of the planning department, correct? So, that is a larger discussion to have with the director of public works and reviewing the construction design standards.
'Cause in the PD, we could say that could be a consideration that had to be looked at.
Correct.
If it's just flat SF five, we could all talk and like and agree everything here, but they could still go build.
That's correct.
Whatever basically they want.
I think, I think probably what Sherman's done, um, probably works better. I mean, it, it becomes a land planning issue if we increase that right of way width enough that we could have two lanes of, of drivability and then two. That, that pushes that street to be in, and the development cost would be astronomical as far as the development's concerned. Selling lots would become even more difficult than what it already is. It's cheaper to do the flat work on site versus trying to pour an eight-inch concrete street and, and make it an additional twenty, twenty-five foot wide, you know? So, I think that would be, it, I think we go back and we look at the parking requirements, um, and I mean, in Sherman, for duplexes, for single families, it's the same thing. It's one space per bedroom. Now, if we get into developing some of the smaller, uh, I don't wanna use the word tiny home, but smaller houses that are, are, you know, where they are, the eight, nine hundred square feet deals, uh, those, those properties, um, I think you could still have a single car, carport, garage, whichever the builder chose. And then one, and have two, two spaces because typically, those are gonna be one-bedroom units anyway. So, those are gonna be a, a different animal altogether than, than the SF five, seven, five, ten, but.
I think our hope, whenever we are able to, um, bring forth those design, those architectural design standards, residential standards, hopefully being able to possibly address some of these and, um, like we kinda mentioned, we'll bring those before you. Um, and if you, as the commission, if you feel comfortable with those or we still need to have a discussion, um, then we would continue to work on them. But if you felt comfortable with them, then we would ask you to direct staff to, uh, notice for a public hearing. And so, our hope is, uh, engaging Phyllis, that we can address not just the architectural design standards, but maybe even establish some recommendations that we can work with other, um, departments on, so, but.
One of the things about that case there that, that alarmed me a little bit, a red flag for me.
That, that may, we, I mean, this is, right, yeah.
We have to be careful on having these sidebar conversations after these meetings, um, just because it's staff updates doesn't invite conversation.
Okay, okay.
Um, with Phyllis's, uh, as some of you have experienced utilizing Phyllis before, Phyllis Gerald, um, held my position for a period of time. And then, um, when I started in this role, she was kind of a mentor and continued some work for us. And so, um, she still is a consultant, um, and she is, we find her very, um, good to work with. And so, she would bring it before all of you as a workshop issue, right, to give you that opportunity to provide feedback. And so, that's really, I think, what you all need and, um, she's, uh, fantastic, so.
I've been working with Phyllis since the eighties.
Yes.
She was at Plano.
Right.
And in my opinion, she is one of the finest planners I've ever sat out in.
And staff enjoys working with her because she listens and takes our, um, thoughts as well in a, uh, respectful manner, right? And provides feedback to all of us in a good way, so.
And I, I think, and hypothetically not related to that case we had, where I think something like this is important is, okay, this is fine, one SF five, but then there's another one next to another one now. It's a very different neighborhood than what it used to be, and the infrastructure's not there.
No, it's not.
Right, and that's my concern of getting some of these tucked back in these neighborhoods. I mean, you, you look where some of these potentially are and you're going down three or four different surface streets that aren't even curbed.
Right.
So, you're, we are gonna struggle as a commission to tell the next person no.
Right, you're setting a precedent.
The precedent gets set, right, and that, you know, and there still is a lot of vacant land with very poor infrastructure getting to it. And if we don't think about that now, in, in my opinion, in a few years, we are gonna have some challenges out there where, I mean, you, it's gonna be hard to get school buses to these places and a lot of other things, right? And, you know, these are, that's why I think.
Your concerns are not lost on us.
Proactively, you've kinda looked at those, right?
Sure you have, yes, absolutely.
Right.
Well, we just, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, I, I think that the HOA with, with the standards and everything included in the HOA in most of the cities that I've worked in, that's a requirement in every residential district that's established for new developments.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess there is a little bit of, of comfort there, knowing that there is something there, but, you know, um, we just need, I think, add stuff to the, to the districts, cut and dried, black and white, then we don't have to.
Well, it's clean, 'cause if you start talking HOAs, you're probably out of the realm of affordable housing as well, because those are more fees that people aren't gonna pay, right? So, you want these to be a clear standard to build something that's a respectable product, affordable, safe, and something that they were proud to continue to build, and we can build a volume, right, so.
Alright, and there's a lot of times they don't get enforced anyway.
Do we know what the, uh, width of, uh, Coffin Street railway is? Is there, is there sufficient width to?
Not now, off the top of my head, I don't know what that is, but I can look that up after this meeting and let you know.
It's, it's probably a fifty-foot ride.
It's probably fifty foot, but I don't know what fifty foot is there.
It probably started out life as a, as a dirt county road.
Prob- you're probably right.
Just one question real quick for future reference. Uh, I got looking at the coffee shop deal and landscaping requirement and everything. That has a connector going through it and there's a buffer between that connector and the highway. Uh, who, is that state right of way? Okay, so you can't put landscaping in there or any?
Correct, mm-hmm, that's correct, yes, sir.
And that's why we have the landscaping.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, and there is opportunity within that ordinance to reduce that, but for that one particularly, there was some issues between the applicant and staff having conversations on that, so.
'Cause I really like the connectors.
Yeah.
You know, it, it allows more access and I think helps the traffic flow, but, uh, just curious, you know, if that comes up again. Okay, thank you.
Okay. If we have no other business before the commission, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright, we stand adjourned at eleven ten A M.